This is a special meeting of the Planning Commission on Wednesday, August 22, 2012. Roll call, please.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here. Okay. Your report, please.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, August 15, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Okay, thank you. I've located the flag this time so we all know where it actually is today. If you'd all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I know we were looking for cards. I don't have any cards right now for oral communications. This is for the -- this is for what's on the agenda. Okay. Laura.
And we would like to present to you one of our attorneys that will be filling in for Gillian Van Miden. We have Bobby Aldesco, and Gillian will provide a background.
Very good.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. In that, I will be making a presentation at the League of California Cities at our next scheduled meeting that afternoon. I won't be able to make it back. And so I've been working with Bobby Aldesco, who's an Assistant City Attorney in our department and who has considerable background in constitutional land use, public works, and just general municipal law matters, has worked for private law firms, and has been with the city for shy of 10 years?
Seven.
Seven, so seven years. And we're really looking forward to having Bobby advise the commission, and you'll be well-served with his expertise. And he has to leave shortly, so we wanted to take this moment at the beginning of the meeting just to assure that you've had the chance to meet him. And he'll be covering, again, the meeting on September 5th. So, thank you, and please welcome Bobby.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome. I will go back. I missed the approval of the minutes for July 18. Do you have a motion on that? Are there any changes? So move.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second to accept the minutes from July 18. Do we have to vote on that? I think we're good. A vote by -- do I have just all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we can move to oral communications. And this is the applicant for the project, so we'll get to that soon. This is just for oral communications. We go to zoning appeals, none. Planning Commission items, old business, none. New business is Item A, Amendment to Approve Statutory Development Agreement for the location 3900 San Fernando Road. Could have staff report, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Sheets and members of the Planning Commission. In August of last year, you recommended approval to the City Council of a development agreement regarding the Glendale Triangle Project, which at the time contained ground floor commercial uses and 229 residential units. Subsequently, the City Council approved the development agreement and the project as a whole, and stipulated in the agreement a foundation-only plan check application was submitted in December 2011. Earlier this year, the developer encountered some unforeseeable increases in construction costs, and now would like to add an additional story to the project, increasing the number of residential units to 287. The revised project will need to go back to the City Council for approval of revised stage two design, amendments to the density bonus housing plan, the density bonus housing agreement, and also for approval of a new development agreement. Development agreements are regulated by state statute and require the Planning Commission to review the development agreement for consistency with the general plan prior to consideration by the council. Like the previous DA for the previous project, staff believes that the current proposed DA is consistent with the general plan. And outlined in the staff report, the project will implement the goals of the recreation element, there's a policy in this element, to develop an in-lie fee for acquisition and management of recreational land within the development review process, which is what we're doing today. The community facilities element cites preserving the high standards of library facilities in their educational and recreational roles. And under the DA, the city would receive an approximately additional $420,000 in development impact fees for parks and recreation. The project is also consistent with the land use element of the general plan. This element encourages creating higher density residential developments in areas best suited for, from a standpoint of accessibility, current development, community organization, transportation, circulation facilities, and economic feasibility. This element also promotes the revitalization of deteriorating neighborhoods. And given the proposed project design and location, it is consistent with these goals. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the development agreement to City Council. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Gillian Van Miden to go over the development agreement. The attachment that you received with the staff report, the development agreement attachment was a draft, and she can go over with you the changes that have been made, or the proposed changes since you received the development agreement last week.
Thank you, Roger. Members of the Planning Commission, Chair Protam, since the planning -- since the draft development agreement was submitted to you, we did receive some changes from Developer Council, which in sub and substance are not substantive changes, but mainly just some edit, some minor editing to update the status of the ownership of the project site, whereas in Recital C, it was noted that they had a legal interest at that time. They have since that time purchased the site. So that's the nature of some of these updates, just to reflect that the fee title to the project site is now in the ownership of the developer, rather than they're having an equitable interest in the site, which is also a prerequisite to entering into a development agreement. And then what we're dealing with here is the first revised project. So there were some consistency changes through the document to reflect that where that -- to correct that reference to the first revised project, since there have been two iterations prior to this, and this one adding an additional number of units and an additional floor. In going through, there were two areas of the agreement where there was our figures or timeframes to be filled in. One was the term. The original development agreement was for a six-month period. Normally statutory development agreements are meant to provide certainty to developer with respect to future changes in zoning and other regulations. And that is not this type of development agreement. The first development agreement was for the explicit purpose to allow the developer to prepay and pay in full the development impact fee before the change in the scheduled rate increase took effect. And that was beneficial to the city because the city obtained the full payment up front, rather than, under our current development agreement ordinance, 50% of that fee at the time of building permit issuance with the remaining part of the fee to be paid at the time prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. They went ahead and paid that fee for the revised project. Now we're looking at the first revised project to add units, and as a consequence of that, additional fees are due. So what we are essentially agreeing to do in this agreement is to allow them to -- they'll be -- we'll be calculating the entire fee based on the new fee schedule for the entire project, and they will be credited that amount that they have already paid, so they'll be paying that delta. And so that's what we're attempting to memorialize here. Again, a six-month term is being recommended because the purpose of this is not to lock in that zoning certainty, but to allow them to pay that delta of the fee without having to come back and pay an entirely new fee under the current rate, which is twice the rate that they paid when they submitted the project for foundation-only plans last year. And that would be somewhat punitive for a highly desirable project, infill project with many benefits to the city. So it's a six-month term. That's a missing piece that was -- that we're recommending. And then the other feature that wasn't, or piece of information that wasn't included on page, excuse me, on page eight, is the city sewer mitigation fee, which obviously is going to change because it'll be recalculated based on the first revised project. And that will be a fee that we will fill in in information that I'm -- and I'm looking at the project manager, Alan Castillo, that will be provided and is a set fee based on a formula. So that will be provided as well. Other than that, in reviewing the recommended changes by Developer Council, again, non-substantive, and so the document that you have before you essentially performs in the manner as represented before you. If you have any questions specifically about the agreement, I'm available to answer those.
I do, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Van Miden, the $420,000 extra in impact fees that is being paid, is that what it is? Is it $420,000?
Need to verify that with the project.
Approximately, yeah.
Okay. That is under the, not under the pipeline category of allocating the impact fees, but according to the new category or whatever, right?
That's correct. They are now subject to the fee, the fees at the rate that's currently in effect. And they would be paying the fees, that delta that I described, under the program that exists under our development impact fee ordinance. That is 50% at the time of building permit issuance, and then the remainder before the issuance of certificate of occupancy. If there were a rate increase before the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, it would affect that second half of the fee, just so that you know.
So then the one floor, the new units that are being added, are being treated under the schedule or the regiment for the development impact fee that it is today, not when it was in the pipeline?
Not exactly. Again, to repeat what I said, that the project, the first revised project will be evaluated under the development impact fee ordinance in its totality, and what that fee would be. They'll be credited against that total fee, what they've already paid, and they're going to pay the difference.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions?
I had a question for Mr. Kiesel earlier today. You said you had an answer.
Yeah, why don't you repeat the question?
My question was the uses for the retail that were permitted. And my concern was the medical use that was permitted in the development agreement, and also the restriction of the live-work units along San Fernando.
Uh-huh.
I don't have much of a concern of that. I was more concerned about the medical uses and also the, what was it, the leasing office?
Leasing.
On San Fernando. So I was talking in terms of the consistency with the land use element, and how it's supposed to make that into a more pedestrian environment down there in South Glendale. And I was concerned how much that a medical use helps to make it pedestrian-oriented, having it on the retail front, and how so much of the retail is centered on Central and not on San Fernando, where it's a big leasing office is located on San Fernando, where I think most of the pedestrian activity would occur.
What you're looking at is the DA, whether that, whether the proposed DA is consistent with the city's general plan. The city's general plan is a general document. It's not a, doesn't cite specific uses for specific places on a particular development. And so all the, all of the uses that are proposed are allowed in the general plan because the general plan doesn't specify particular uses. It gives overall commercial uses, or retail uses, or residential uses, broader categories. And so to the extent that you're looking at consistency, say, with the overall project to the general plan, that your concern delves a little bit deeper than, at this point, you're being asked to do. Does that make sense?
To do?
You're being asked to
We're supposed to do here tonight.
To make a recommendation to the City Council on whether the development agreement is consistent with the general plan, and not necessarily delve into the specific uses that are being proposed where they're being proposed.
So, well, the DA gives some specifics, right, like live-work lots, that you can't have it on San Fernando, but it's okay to do it on Central. Is live-work even consistent with the general plan?
Live-work
As a retail, as a retail
Live-work is considered a commercial.
It's considered a commercial?
Yeah.
Now you put a restriction on where the development can put it on, you know?
There was, yeah.
Right. So my question is, why wasn't there other restrictions put on for the other uses?
In terms of why, why there weren't restriction, why there wasn't a restriction on
On the leasing office and then also the medical, the medical use as well.
Okay. To be honest with you, I'm not sure why there was a restriction on the, in the DA for restricting live-work to San Fernando, or not San Fernando.
Just to let you know, under the code, anything on SFMU, there are no live-work units along San Fernando. They're not allowed at all. So that's what we took as the base was, we just followed what the code said, and it said no live-work units along San Fernando. It didn't say no live, or it didn't say no leasing offices or medical offices along San Fernando. So that's why we strictly put it in there, so that developer can later on not put the live-work because it's under code.
There was, there was a restriction in the SFMU not, to not allow live-work units. There wasn't that same restriction on Central or Las Feliz?
Okay. I guess I'm just concerned as far as making it a really pedestrian environment, and San Fernando is really the place to do it, but most of, and I'm not sure if there's a possibility to put any kind of restriction, maybe it's too late now, or maybe you can't do it at all. But there's the leasing office takes up most of San Fernando, just as far as storefront area. It might not be the biggest store, but it takes up most of the
In terms of the frontage?
Frontage, yeah. Frontage space. So I had concern about that. And also the medical use, that if the whole building just has, and I don't think the developer would want to do that, but if the whole building just had medical use all in the first floor, I don't know if that would be so consistent with the plan for the area to make it more pedestrian envir, pedestrian-oriented.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Schrulli?
Thank you. I know this line of questioning is also not really in the scope of what we're trying to do tonight, but this is just for my own clarification and education purposes. I did pose this question to the staff earlier today, and I will pose it again so that, you know, you may give us the answer. The first question that I have is the, you know, it has to do with the Senate Bill 1818 that allows the density increases, height increases, you know, additional, I guess, incentives from the menu that we give them. And apparently, they went from 11 units of low-income housing to 22 units of low-income housing, that allowed increases of the apartments, which allowed them to add another floor for this project.
That's correct.
I guess, you know, the first part of that first question is that if they increased to, later down the road, their reasoning for, I mean, your reasoning here was that because the unforeseeable increase in construction costs, that they came back and did this. If they then decide at later time, they're, okay, well, we'll increase the low-income housing to 33 units, what else are we giving? Is there, is there a cap? Is there a limit as to how much, you know, how far can this development could go? Obviously, we allowed another story, an increase of, you know, quite a bit of housing units here. So that's first, my first question. So it was not explained in the reports. I just wanted to get a little bit better explanation as to, you know, what was, you know, what steps were taken to get to these numbers, because you automatically assume when developers work on the project, to take full advantage of SB 1818, they have done so in the first phase of the project, and yet they are able to come back and do this by increasing the low-income housing units. The second part of the question, which I posed you because that solid waste in the environmental report, that where all the other, like sewage load, the water load is, has increased, solid waste has actually decreased. So I just wanted to get an explanation on the environmental report.
Right. In the, the second addendum to the final EIR, as Gillian mentioned previously, this project has sort of gone through three iterations. This addendum compares the first iteration of the project with the current innovation of the project. The first project contains substantially more commercial area than the current project. And so that's why, while the number of residential units is more in the current project than the first project, the commercial portion of the project was, what, the commercial area was much greater in the first project than it is now. And that's why you have less solid waste generated now than the first project. It's the amount of commercial that was proposed.
Then same line of thought process, wouldn't that apply to the other utility as well, like sewage and water usage, because, you know, the commercial versus residential, if this type of reasoning was applied to the solid waste?
Yeah, that may, but there are formulas that, you know, each residential unit of a certain size generates this much sewage, this much solid waste, this much electricity uses. The same holds true with commercial. You know, each square footage of commercial generates, and that, the formulas that they use apparently, solid waste generates more commercial, but less sewage capacity.
If I might add on a couple of points related particularly to the solid waste issue, sewer, the project pays sewer fees, and those are considered full mitigation under the California Environmental Quality Act, because those fees go to projects that mitigate those impacts. Also, the second part that I was going to respond to is that the addendum looks at whether or not there is a significant increase to a previously identified significant impact that, or worsens the severity. And an addendum can only be adopted if those factors aren't in place. So that is the reason why an addendum was acceptable, and it's not typically a document that requires further review or circulation, because we aren't looking at additional mitigation measures, we aren't looking at new significant impacts, or the worsening of the severity of previously identified impacts. And much of that, as was indicated by Mr. Kiesel, was, in a sense, mitigated by the project itself because of the conversion of certain uses within the project. So I hope that that sort of answers some of the impact questions.
As I mentioned, that this was more for my, for more of my education and clarification purposes than trying to question the documents.
Edification.
Edification, and then first question.
Then the first, the first part, the project that you saw last year did not, did not maximize SB 1818. So this year, or the current project that they're proposing now, they have increased the number of affordable housing units that will be located in the project, which has allowed them to add an additional story to the project.
So is there, is there a cap as to, let's say if this developer wants to come back?
And add 50 affordable housing units?
Right, exactly.
Do they get three stories?
Right. What is the, you know, what is left?
Yeah, there, there are some restrictions.
A lot of it's based on the affordability and the number of units that they have. So depending on how affordable it is, if you have units that are affordable, the very low income versus low income, you might have perhaps only a bonus of 30% if you're putting in a certain amount of very low income. So it just, your bonuses can change based on how many units you're putting on and the level of affordability. So to say they can't add more, perhaps they could. I haven't looked at the specifics of this, but once you trigger SB 1818 and you have a certain level of affordability, people can ask, depending on the level of, the level of units and the level of affordability that they're requesting, you can ask for up to three incentives that we would have to grant. And then people sometimes could ask for additional, and those would be ones that would be up to discretion, but at least if you met, meet a certain level of affordability, we have to grant up to three concessions.
And if I could, I'll just add to that because I think part of the question had to do with limiting factors. And one of the limiting factors within SB 18 is environmental impacts and other impacts that are significant, and, but not just the typical significant impacts that may not be mitigable, but very significant impacts. And it's not usually the situation. There's other mitigating factors or limiting factors that come from the developer's side in terms of, you know, the, the cost of construction, et cetera, that may serve to limit that, the extent of the development before you even get to that more expansive analysis where there might be significant environmental effects that the city might state. You've gone a little bit too far, and here are the reasons why. It's, you know, significant and unavoidable in so many areas of environmental effect, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? We do have a card. Speaker, Mr. Ben Brosen?
I just wanted to have my card up to the mic. I'm Ben Brosen. I represent the applicant. I just wanted to put my card in in case there are any questions I could address.
Very good. At this point, I think the questions we had have been answered, unless you had a point you wanted to make, then that's fine. That's good. Thank you very much. But I ask if we want to discuss or deliberate, but I think we have already done that. Any other thoughts?
No, I'd be happy to move.
I think we need
Do we need motion to?
There's a resolution on your
Yeah, that one.
So are we adopting this resolution? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
So I move to recommend the environment, I guess, or development impact fee, the difference, I guess, calculated by the staff, and Resolution Number 2012-01, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale recommending approval of a development agreement in connection with the Glendale Triangle Project located at 3900 San Fernando Road, Glendale, California, to the council.
Second.
Okay, we have, we have been moved in second, and roll call, please.
Senator, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That takes us to Community Development Department updates. If any.
Well, we have one update, just, I already mentioned it earlier. I know you sent out an email to everybody letting you know that there's an Ethics and Public Service class that we're going to be offering on September 18 in the Perkins Buildings from 8 to 10. That's for the various board members and the city, and then also our staff who serve the boards. And everybody operates as a, as a hearing officer. And so just wanted to let you know that's, that's going to be out. You'll be receiving a Brown Act notice on that, as well as a, an invitation to attend. If you're unable to attend on the
And so just wanted to let you know that's going to be out. You'll be receiving a Brown Act notice on that as well as an invitation to attend. If you're unable to attend the onsite training that we'll have, we do have an onsite version or online version, which you're welcome to take, is through the Attorney General's office. And I did send the link out in case you would like to take that. If you do take the online version, I just asked that you let me know that you've taken it. So, we'll just mark it down on the training records. And then also we had a case that was appealed. It was 2116 Rim Press Drive. You guys considered that back on June 18th. That's now tentatively scheduled for hearing at the city council on October 2nd. So, once we have a final date on that, we'll let you know, but we'll probably be asking the chair of the chair of Protam to attend the council meeting that night once it's finalized. And that's all the announcements I have.
I had a question about that.
Okay.
I think the chair was against it, right? So...
I don't recall the exact voting on that one.
So, the chair was against it, but she'll still represent what the commission?
Correct.
Voted on it?
Of course.
And I'm not sure if she'll be available that day. We already know that she will not be attending the planning commission that week. So, we'll need to verify with her if she'll actually be able to attend that meeting. If not, then we'll invite our chair of Protam.
All right.
Oh, boy. Very good.
That would be great.
Doesn't surprise me that it's being appealed. Comments from commissioners?
None.
None. I do have one comment, if you'll give me that time. Last week, we discussed the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation's Glendale Dodger Night. So, I have some flyers I will hand out to the other commissioners. It offers group seating at somewhat of a discount. It's on Friday night, September 28th. They will be playing the Colorado Rockies. It'll be City of Glendale Night and Tommy Lasorda's birthday. And at the end of the game, we'll all be able to go in the field and kind of enjoy the fireworks and such that night. So, tickets are available. It describes on the flyer how you can get them, if you want to handle this, hand that down. And also if you go online, the city website, it also gives ways that we can all get the tickets, so. That would be great. Any other comments? With motion?
So move.
Gone.
Second?
Adjourned. Thank you.